Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight we have our study session for the General Government Civil Service Commission. Councilman Abdallah has requested this, so we are honoring his request.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Can we start?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, first I thank you and thank my colleagues on, you know, hosting the Civil Service Commission. And the reason I'm doing this because I want really every commission in the city to come in front of the city council and tell the public what they are doing. So everybody knows what's in the city, how they can serve, how they can participate, how they can do good for our city. So I would like to start by listening to the president of the Civil Service Commission and listen to his introduction.
Do you have his name?
I don't have, I don't have it.
Scott Marinchelli.
Scott Marinchelli.
Okay, go ahead. We've got Elizabeth and Scott on the line here. Yeah, if we could, he has a PowerPoint presentation. Could we share, could we share that screen? How do we do that?
You make her a co-host.
I'll make you a co-host.
If, I mean, it doesn't matter. He's got the notes. He can go through it. I just thought it'd be easier.
Yeah, I like the idea of the PowerPoint. Thank you.
Yeah, PowerPoint's a good idea.
Hey, go ahead. Councilman Abdallah?
Yeah, I did the talk to the gentleman for a little bit. And I thank him very much for all the explanation and the information he gave me. And there is lots of good information actually for everybody to listen to and to hear. And I want just everybody to understand that we do not bring the commissioners in front of us for any reason other than we learn and the resident learn about what we do in the city.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you see it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll click and you go.
Are we all set to go?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, so I want to introduce myself. I'm Scott Marinchelli. I'm the president. I was appointed by the commission in 2019. My term expires in three twenty, thirty-one of twenty-two. I'm also joined, I'm assisted by Doug Bailey. He's a commissioner. He was appointed by Mayor Puleko in 2020, his, and the term ends of three thirty-one, twenty-three. And Carrie McKinnon is the secretary and she's elected by the employees of the city in twenty-one. And her term expires in three thirty-one of twenty-four. Essentially, my position, what I do is I represent the people during hiring for, make sure there's no unfair hiring practices, nepotism, bias, or any kind of racist unfair practices. So essentially, if there is, you know, the, any, any essentially what happens when they establish a list, what will happen is we're contacted, we come in, we do, we sit in on the interviews, make sure that there's not any, no unfair practices. So we'll just go through the list of work accomplished 2021. We established eligibility list for civilian, civil, civilian dispatch, established eligibility list for labor, established eligibility list for deputy recreation director, the senior coordinator, custodian, clerical, marketing librarian, office manager from the building department, circulation manager for library, more, it's an animal control. The, all the openings are posted. And then there's applicants have to take a written exam, civil service exam. They must pass the exam at seventy percent. I've sat in many of the exams to make sure that the, you know, there was no unfair practices there. Time, make sure that they had proper materials to complete the exams on time. Then there's an oral interview. It's a panel style interview, which we, I sit on a board of anywhere four to five people that make sure again that we go through a list and then there's, you have to achieve seventy percent. There's, they are graded also on the oral, oral interview. And they have to achieve at least a seventy percent to be considered, move on to the final. Where fifty percent of the written exam and fifty percent of the oral review, they're added together. It equals your total score. So what happens is then they, the top three would move on to the final phase, which the department head would be able to interview the last three. Then they would apply for, the city does a background check to make sure that they clear the background investigation. And then they move on to the interview with the department head, and that's who picks the final position. Posting, postings are open for the DPW supervision. Written examinations, applicant must achieve a score of at least seventy percent to be considered further. There's an oral interview, civil service list certification. This is a list of compromised candidates who are ranked by their competence composite score, fifty percent of written, fifty percent of oral board, plus the senior points. Senior points are years that are the applicant has worked for the city. So if they work ten years, they get additional ten points and that gets added to their overall score. The appointment authority can promote one of the top three scoring candidates. But if I'm going through this too fast, you guys have any questions, please ask. Another thing is a lot of these commissioners come from the other cities that also do these interviews, just as we had one just recently for the Department of Rec, the assistant director. And we had four other civil commissioners come from, one was, I think, Dearborn, we had Garden City, Redford, and I think it was Livonia. So they were directors. They came, they did the questionnaires, they filled out all the their scores on what they felt, all those scores were tallied. I sat in and oversee, make sure that everything is done fairly and that everybody has a fair shot at the job. The top three moved on to be interviewed by a rec director. And I think we did secure a new person, so. Is there any questions yet?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Yes, let me ask you a question. If there's a position that's open, say there's two positions open and you had five, six people apply. Does the, does it go to top, one over the top three, then it goes to the top four, or how does that go?
Yeah, that's exactly right. It's written in the, I want to say the ordinance. So for any additional vacancy, you get additional names on the list.
Now, is, is it possible that anybody out of that top three or four can get the job above other people?
I think it comes down to the final interview.
And I, I guess I don't, are you saying could number five get the position?
Before number one, two, three, or four?
Um, it depends how many openings. Okay.
Well, unless it says there's only two openings.
Okay, so no, um, I, I believe you only get one additional name. I'd have to look it up. One additional name for every one opening, or maybe you get two names for every opening. So no, we couldn't jump down to number twenty just because there's three openings that, you couldn't do that. Could you bring on number two before you bring on number one? Yes. You might do that because maybe number two was available to start, you know, immediately and number one had to give a four-week notice. So you might do that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah?
If a job is open and people from within the city, union members applied for it and somebody from outside the city applied for it and they ranked in the top three, do we have to give a priority to the person who works in the city?
No, we don't. Yeah, so this is a non-union position. If it's, if it's a union position, that's a different story. But a non-union position, we do have, there's no preferential treatment to inside, internal candidates.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, the exam, which is a written exam, my understanding, it's written by companies certified by the state.
Yeah.
And, and we buy those tests and we monitor the people who are taking them.
Yes.
I asked the question, is there any way, anybody who ha, who can have access to it before the candidate take the exam?
No, not that I've ever seen that be impossible. We're retaining actually six different companies for six different exams. You can see the companies utilized. And if somebody comes back to retest, then a different company is used in that retest. So you would not have somebody coming back on a duplicate test.
We've had, we've had candidate who have tested over the years and we've tried to keep track of it as best as we possibly can. But I mean, I've, I've had candidates test for, you know, ten years or they come back, so it becomes next to impossible. But, but you know, we utilize multiple vendors. And they're, they're not only state, they're national companies. So they're not all state of Michigan. MCOS is state of Michigan test writing company, but the other ones are, are all over the country.
Okay, Elizabeth, the oral exam, who sits on the oral exam when we test or interview candidates?
So it depends. I'll just flip to that side. So it depends. So for entry level oral board exams, we always have one commissioner and then one to, one to three external professionals and then usually a human, the human resource director. For dispatch, it's quite different, and this has always been the practice. One commissioner, the dispatchers have asked to be part of it and we've agreed to do that. And that's been a more of a collective bargaining agreement item. The HR director, a police captain or higher, so that means the police chief could sit, and a fire captain or higher in general for civilian dispatch. For promotional exams, it's three external people. So that would be only for DPW supervisors. And for that, just the commissioner observes all the interviews. So for instance, for the deputy recreation director that Mr. Marinchelli had already referred to, he was the commissioner that got in because there were a number of, there was an internal candidate. I removed myself from the process and that's why we had four additional professionals from outside. There was also another entry level position where I knew more, more than one candidate. I removed myself and for an HR director next door at Redford Township, he served in my place.
And you take the average of the three scores, if there are three people?
Yeah, or five, yeah, or whatever. You got it.
So we take the average score of all that participants?
Always, yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. I have Councilman Abdullah.
Just had a question. Is there any way that we could get it, and I'm not sure if you can, I totally respect that. Is there a way that we could get a copy of a, just one of the traditional written exams? I'm just curious, the types of questions are asked down there. And if you can't, can you give us at least a sample of the types of questions are asked? I'm just curious.
I could provide you a sample, but we sign, we sign agreements saying that we're not going to copy or distribute these exams. So if we were to do that, so I could give you a sample, we could give you sample questions.
Yeah, that's all, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I can't give you, yeah, no.
That'd be fine, if you don't mind, Elizabeth.
So I'll do like a general clerical or something. So many different ones, you know, over the years, we've had civilian dispatchers where they listened to a recording and it's like mock nine-one-one calls, you know, so that's not easily duplicated.
I'd like to say something. I want to apologize. This is my first Zoom meeting I've ever done. I'm a very face-to-face kind of guy. But I want to say Elizabeth's resources, and since I've been sitting on this commission, I've sat with commissioners from Wayne, Trenton, Redford, Livonia, Dearborn, Garden City, multiple cities, I can't even remember. And I'll be honest with you, I don't know how she gets them to come serve because it's, it's almost like a volunteer situation and they come out and they're always more than happy to do it. And we're going to really miss her, the reach she has with other cities. So this is going to be quite difficult going forward for these positions to be able to, you know, make sure that we retain these kind of connections.
Okay, I've got a question. How long is the test results good for?
Oh, these lists are good for two years. These lists are good for two, unless, unless someone, you know, the list can exhaust, right? We could hire everyone on the list. We could have people remove themselves from the list. You know, when these lists get at the eighteenth month part, you know, it's sometimes hard to even get in touch with those people because they don't necessarily update their contact information. So, you know, so two years are what the lists are certified for. But usually, you know, we just use the test for the day, right? We ship things back. It just depends what the test is. But the list itself are good for two years. So today we did clerical and that's what we told everyone. We have one vacancy, but then this list is good for two, for two full years. So this is the list that we reference for any clerical openings over the next two years.
And also too, if someone applies for more than one civil service job, do they just need to take the test once?
No. So I've, I've seen quite a few people. That's why I feel like I, you know, they work here. No, they take multiple and people are so fantastic in trying their sincerity and wanting to work for the city. So, you know, there's a couple of candidates that are seasoned veterans that know my spiel. So no, they, if they go for civilian dispatcher, it's a civilian dispatcher. And it's a civilian dispatcher oral board. And if they go for clerical, it's a clerical. One person was very happy. There was only three people in the room today. She said, oh, this is so much better than, less nerve-wracking than civilian dispatcher. So now if you apply for a job, you gotta, you gotta take a test for each and every single one.
There's different qualifications for one position.
How much does it cost the city to administer the test?
He's, he comes really cheap, fifty bucks for him. And, yeah, and you know, I'm, I'm already here. So it just depends what you, listen, you see the, you see the exams on the, on your agenda, you know, e-skills, that test bank was like forty-six hundred dollars. MCOS, it depends how many, it depends how many exams you give. It, it just, it kind of depends if, like the civilian dispatcher one in the past, they come with a CD or whatever. That one had been more expensive. It just really depends. But, you know, they, they're expensive. They can be easily fifteen hundred dollars. That's why you see them on your agenda. Now, the interviews are also very cheap because he's only a hundred dollars and any other commissioner. And then we pay a stipend to all the directors who come aboard. You don't pay me. And, or, you know, if there are people that are very that, that actually do it on a volunteer basis, or they can't accept payment because they're already on duty maybe for the city of Livonia that day, and so they're not going to accept the stipend payment.
Also, because of COVID, I think we had to go to some online testing as of recently.
And, and we had, when people got themselves quarantined to protect the panel, we had to do Zoom interviews. Not, you know, we, we hope we don't have to do that, but that's why we've become more flexible to protect everybody, including the test takers. That it's, the days are gone for the near future of having a hundred people at the Cantfield Center all test for labor. Because now I'd have to take everyone's temperature, make sure they're masked, and that would be very uncomfortable with two hours. So we break them up and we, we change and we do it in a smaller setting. And similar to the interviews, we've been very sensitive. You know, listen, if people think this is their one shot, I don't want them to take a risk to anybody's health, including their own health. And so if they've been quarantined, we've worked it out and we've done the process as fair as possible. And it's, it's hard, obviously, with the technology, but we've done the best we, we can. It's maybe not the best angles that people have, but it's, it's worked.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah?
Just a question. Does the commissioners require to have any skills or any degrees in order to be appointed to this board? Something like a human resource degree or anything like that?
No, the charter says you have to be a resident of the city of Gibbon Heights. And then it's very clear, one is a mayoral appointment, one is an appointment of the commission, and one is elected by the civil service the civil service employees, which means that deputies, civilian dispatchers, library employees, city hall personnel, DPW personnel, recreation personnel have a chance to vote, nominate among themselves. For that particular commission, that person does not have to work in the city or does not have to live in the city. They have to be an employee of the city or the employee representative.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Continue, sir.
Just, so. We hold hearings for persons under general government who have been removed or suffers a reduction. I have not had to sit on anything like that. We also do notes and files, various letters for commendation, letters of appreciation to someone and/or reports on scoring individual personal jackets. We also review temporary appointments. So when you guys appoint somebody, it comes across our, our table. Essentially, if you guys have anything in specific that you want to ask, but as far as I'm concerned, the hiring practice, it's, it's, um, it's, it's quite a, it's quite a long, lengthy process. You have to start out with a civil service commission test, and then you go through an oral interview if you pass the test. And then you go, then the third, it's actually three steps. Then you're off to the director of the department to make the final decision. So it's pretty, pretty clear-cut process that nobody could really float through, get questions, get, you know, get the right answers. And plus, being diversified, our panels being so diversified, I would see it nearly impossible to be able to reach out to everybody because it's quite a last minute. We get called up pretty much on a last minute basis, let us know, hey, we got, you know, interviews within, it's only a few days. Because these are time-sensitive issues, you know. Once the people get the test passed, we try to move fast as we can. Especially in this environment where it's so difficult to retain employees or in, and/or find new employees. That is one of our biggest problems we're having. A lot of the people that come before us are really shocked on how low the starting wage is. Because we have a lot of people, these, a lot of these people have jobs. And the young, the young people especially, they come to us and they're already working in jobs in similar fields. When we were looking for laborers in the water department to do sewer and water main repairs, we had one gentleman that came to us and he worked on a, on a commercial company doing exactly that. But he was eighteen years old and he was at a much higher rate. And I don't know, did we retain him or? No, yeah, he, he didn't, he didn't come to the city, so.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
For people with disabilities, do we have any accommodation for them when they come to take tests or interview?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
People with disabilities.
Oh, yes.
Do we have a special, you know,
Yes.
accommodations for them?
On the test I've sat in and Elizabeth comes in, she explains the test. Everybody asks anybody if there's anything that they need, any special needs, and she accommodates them, yes. So we also, I know there's a lot of times when we do interviews that when we're, you know, we've had, I try to, I introduce myself to the applicant and, you know, try to put them at ease so they're, you know, they feel comfortable, so they do their best. And I ask them if there's anything they need also, so if there's any special considerations. So, and you know, most people when they come in to interview are very nervous.
Okay, I have one last question and I'll be done.
Sure.
Do you make any recommendations about the entry level salaries for these positions?
I will tell you, two years ago, when I first sat on the board, Redford, the commissioner from Redford, he was shocked. He said they started, this is over two years ago. He said they started, Redford started at over eighteen dollars an hour. And this is pretty much the case. And when we say fifteen thirty-seven, a lot of people, and then there's another issue, you know, it's thirty-six hours, so they're not even getting a full week. You know, I gotta say, John Sell me did a hell of a job when he would explain, listen, you know, mostly for the laborers' jobs, you're going to get so much overtime, you'll make up for it. But it still was very difficult to attract talent. And in my experience, because I own a small business, essentially quality people, you, you have to offer quality pay. And that's the most difficult part. We can hire people, we can't retain them. So, and the problem is, is you want to get somebody in here. If you spend the time and money and investment into an employee and then they leave in six months, and this has been the case over and over and over again. Essentially, we're just doing the same interviews over and over again because nobody's staying. And you want to retain employee for, you know, at least if you invest in them, you want to retain them for at least ten years.
In your experience with other cities, Scott, do you think fifteen dollars starting an hour is fair or just in your personal opinion? The city should offer more than that?
I think you have no choice but to offer more than that, or else we're going to just be having a revolving door. The reality is, a lot of these positions in other cities, there's openings everywhere. This is just not here. And every industry is losing people to higher wages. Definitely have to get this done and get it done immediately. You're just hurting the people in the city. I'm one of them. I lived here my whole life. You know, I've always been in the public eye one way or another from, I volunteered for the soccer club for up to almost ten years. I was the president and I've been fighting this same fight, trying to get improvements to our soccer fields, improvements, improvements to our parks. And then this position came across. It wasn't like I was excited to do it. But I did it because it was either this or pick up a position as a reserve officer. And I feel like I wouldn't be good in that position. So I decided to be, I did this just to give something back. That's, I also try to do this, you know, show my kids to give something back. But the reality is, the serving government is, uh, it's, it's, it's a labor of love because let me tell you, it's, it's painful all the time. You know, there's, there's a lot of joy in it, but unfortunately nowadays, there's not a lot of, not a lot of great things going on with the government. And you, you guys in your positions, you have a lot going on. You got to address the, the city infrastructure, the, the employees of the city and, you know, you got, the city infrastructure is in dire need of a lot of improvement. You know, so this, this part of it, your infrastructure, your first, your number one resource is people. Remember that. Surround yourself with the best people you can afford and you'll be successful.
I agree with you a hundred percent. And I personally thank you very much for all that information. And I yell to my colleagues if they have any questions.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bede.
Uh thank you so much, and Scott, thank you so much for your time, for your services and 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 putting this forward and this amazing presentation. And I know that uh when I first got onto council, one of the first thing that I did was was I jumped on a plow truck with Wesley Zane. And I had an extensive conversation with him, and one of the things that he told me was, I said, and you know, I I just got on and here I am and I'm. I'm just asking questions, right? And I said, you know, Mr. Zane, if there's anything that I can do to help, what can I do? He said, Mo, we are losing maybe three. Um uh uh I want to say uh, I I forget what he said, but. Uh some some staples in into our community that work for DPW or or that work with us and are going to retire. And he said, every time we try to bring somebody else in, they're such low pay, we're teaching them the skill trade, they're passing everything and then they're going out to different cities and they're making more money from different cities. Uh so I I I share you guys' frustration and I understand what you guys are dealing with, I can only imagine how many of these things. Uh Elizabeth Sport Perry had to go through, but uh so I I thank you as well, Elizabeth. Um so I I I also would say to to my colleagues, I hope that we can echo uh. Uh the gentleman's conversation today and hopefully they can get an earlier, you know, a a higher starting pay. So that we're not losing them to people like Livonia, Redford, Canton, Northville. Uh because they're learning the system through us, and then they're just going out to other municipalities. Uh so I just wanted to thank you for this presentation, thank you guys as well, thank you to Councilman. Uh Abdul Hack for putting calmness forward, I think that was very informative, I appreciate you, and I yield the rest of my time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions before we? End the study session? Okay, at this time, this ends our study session, I ask everyone to come back at seven o'clock, which is in approximately twenty minutes.
Mariana hits her hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on, I I didn't see it.
Thank you, thank you so much, Scott, El- Elizabeth, I just had two quick questions, again, more for the public than anything, but. Where do we typically post this position so that they can look for them and? If, when does the list run out, like if we're we're left with two candidates, do we have to hire from those two candidates, or do we? Get to post that position again?
So you do get to post the position again, if it drops um drops to a certain number and um I. So if it drops below three, I believe the rule says then you could go out to post. Um with regards to advertising everywhere we possibly can, and it depends what the position is. And so we talk about this in the Civil Service Commission meeting, so the city is required by um. The ordinances that we have to publish in the city's newspaper, so that includes the press and guide, I. You know, that that is a requirement, so we do that. Um we also have traditionally done the free press news, it's on Career Builders Zip Recruiter. It's on, um we we put it on our, yeah, indeed, it goes on our website, it gets tweeted out, we recently. Um with you started with LinkedIn, um if it's. If it's something that's specific, let's say to um gerontology or something like senior coordinator. Um that would be appropriate to use handshake, um like to go to a college like Madonna University that has a gerontology program. And then, you know, use that app, um. Um Michigan Chronicle, we advertise in as well, um so it if if it's civilian dispatch, there's actually. Um some schools that train dispatchers, um so we actually will reach out to those academies. Um so it depends what it what it is, um. But that's kind of the, you know, we have a regular checklist and then we can usually go beyond, if we have to specialize MML for, you'll see any of our director. Or um deputy director or like senior coordinator or or office manager or library. For the library, we post through the T L N, the library network, um we also will go to specific colleges, they have a library science program. Um to recruit from there, so that, you know, it depends on what the position is.
Councilman Abdo Haq, go ahead, please.
Uh I would like to extend, you know, an invitation to all the commissions, if what if they would like to come in front of us. For fifteen to thirty minutes every meeting. Uh to explain to us what they do so everybody can know who they are, what they do, and they learn. You know, about us and we learn about them and the residents will learn about the city too. If they come voluntarily, that would be nice of them.
Thank you. Any further questions before we end the study session? At this time, we'd like to thank you for your presentation today. And everybody come back at seven PM, which is approximately fifteen minutes.